Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Waukegan City Council Meeting, March 20th, 2017. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Ziegler.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Here.
Alderman Vialobos.
Present.
Alderman Nussem.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Please stand for invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you for our mayor, for this council, and for the city of Waukegan. We ask your blessings of all. Continued the blessings you gave us, and we thank you for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no mayor's comments. Minutes, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from March 6, 2017. Motion by Alderman Vialobos, second by Alderman Ziegler. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Resolutions, proclamations, presentation, appointments. Main Street, please.
Good evening, Mayor Motley, council members, and audience. Waukegan Main Street and the Greater Waukegan Development Coalition are partners with students from Lake Forest College to collect feedback from local residents, businesses, and employees living and working in the downtown Waukegan area. The purpose of the survey is to identify competitive advantages of the area as well as what amenities are desired by the community as we look forward to future development opportunities. The information will then be used in the creation of a market analysis and strategy to better promote the area's development. If you are interested in participating in the survey or obtaining a copy of the results, please contact the Main Street office at (847) 623-6650. Thank you.
Thank you, Art. Item B, presentation of the 2016 Kate Corry Award. Lori Neuhahn, would you please step forward?
Good evening, my name is Lori Neuhahn. I'm the chair of the Waukegan Arts Council. My honor, we present the 2016 Kate Corry Award. An extraordinary Waukegan artist was served as the ambassador for our community in his or her travels as a working artist. This award is named in honor of Kate Corry, famous artist who interred for a black college that was born in Waukegan in 1938. She is considered one of the West's most famous artists, and her works and collections hang in the Smithsonian Institution in Waukegan, the museum, among other museums. On behalf of the Waukegan Arts Council and City of Waukegan, we present the 2016 Kate Corry Award to master bassist Harrison Bankhead for his remarkable jazz prowess and his worldwide reputation.
And then you'll see a few words. So just to share a little bit about this incredible artist in front of us here from Waukegan. Harrison is a Waukegan native and has been a keystone in the Chicago jazz community and at the forefront of new developments in jazz for more than three decades. He is a deeply soulful and adventurous musician, whose anchored groups led by Edward Wilkerson, Malachi Thompson, Fred Anderson, Cahill Alzabar, Hamiatt Blewett, and Ernest Dawkins, among many others. He was also a key force in Edward Wilkerson's great Eight Bold Souls, and a trusted collaborator of Ernest Dawkins, Hameed Drake, Fred Anderson, Dee Alexander, and Roscoe Mitchell. Along with his ubiquity in area clubs and concert halls, as well as on recordings, Bankhead released an album under his own leadership in 2010, when he issued the stunning Morning Sun Harvest Moon. Very much in the AACM manner, Bankhead's compositions look far into the future but are anchored in a variety of traditions, from African and Native American sounds and rhythms to the grooves of jazz and blues, with a bit of calypso adding color to the mix. In 2013, he released another recording Velvet Blue. He just recorded a new album with tenor saxophonist Chico Freeman, who is a member of the transatlantic organization with Harrison, The Bridge, featuring collaborations between musicians from Chicago and France on both sides of the Atlantic. He is working on releasing his current CD, which is an historical CD featuring Marshall Allen and Danny Ray Thompson, who are now managing the Sun Ra Orchestra, along with other Chicago musicians. Bankhead has toured extensively throughout the United States, and Europe, and elsewhere around the world. He recently performed in New York City at the Visions Festival. He is a regular featured artist at the Chicago Jazz Festival, and last year appeared with James Sanders and Moata Boden. He is currently on faculty at the Innovative Chicago Academy of Music Conservatory, whose mission is to transform students into globally conscious cultural citizens with developed skills. And they offer highly accomplished professional master musicians such as Harrison Bankhead. And we at the Waukegan Arts Council have been very fortunate to have Harrison play at several of our events with Julie Woods on sax a couple years ago, and last summer he joined us for the Cahill Alzabar All-Star Quartet down at the lakefront. So without a doubt, Bankhead is one of the most exceptional upright bass players in contemporary jazz, and we are just fortunate to have him in our community. So, thank you so much, and congratulations. Please come say a few words.
Thank you so very much. First of all, I'm very proud to have worked here in Waukegan for 32 years at the City of Waukegan, and I'm very proud, also proud, to be from Waukegan. It's a wonderful base, we're a wonderful community here. We're doing many great things on many different levels, and that is my greatest pride, to be Waukegan proud. Thank you, Mayor Motley. You're a friend of mine, I know you've, I've been knowing you for very many years, and thank you for the city council and the arts council. Thank you very much.
Next is the Finance Committee. Alderman Valco, please.
Thank you, sir. The Finance Committee met this evening to discuss a couple of items. First, in 2013, the city council passed an ordinance increasing the city's hotel motel tax, occupancy tax, from 5% to 6%, with a sunset provision, and increase would automatically cease on April 30th of this year, unless otherwise provided by the city council. The city council now finds itself in the best interest of the citizens of the City of Waukegan to repeal the sunset clause and to continue the hotel motel occupancy rate at 6%. So this evening, the Finance Committee met and voted to approve an ordinance amending the Chapter 20 of the City Code of the City of Waukegan regarding the city's hotel or motel occupancy tax, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, the other thing we discussed, sir, was recently enacted rules published by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources in December of '14 require Lake Michigan water supply communities to tighten up their systems as part of the state's responsibility to conserve water drawn from Lake Michigan. The current allowable non-revenue water volume is equal to 12% or less of the total water supply. This standard will decrease to 10% by 2019. To address the problem, the city is proposing to conduct a formal water audit, as developed by the American Water Works Association and approved by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. The term "water audit" is defined as an examination of pumping, metering, and financial accounts to check their accuracy. The water audit works to trace the flow of water from the source through the water distribution system and into customer properties. The water audit normally is summarized in the form of a spreadsheet that details the variety of consumption and losses that exist in the water system, and the purpose of the water audit is to accurately determine the amount of unaccounted-for water in a water distribution system, thereby allowing the city to develop a prioritized plan to eliminate all but the unavoidable losses. So this evening, the Finance Committee voted to approve a contract with Stanley Consultants, Inc., for the purpose of conducting an audit of the city's water system for an amount not to exceed $28,000, coming out of Budget Code 555-915-924-476, and Stanley Consultants was the low quote, and I so move, sir.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item D, motion to authorize the proper city officials to exercise the extension clause in the 2016 water treatment plant sludge dewatering contract with P&amp;H Cenisac, Inc., Incorporated of Milton VT, for an amount not to exceed $158,000. Funds for the contract are available in line item 555-915-724426. The contract has a one-year extension available if the parties agree to exercise it, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nussem, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item E, motion to authorize the proper city officials to extend the water treatment chemical annual bid agreements with the current vendors, who have agreed to holding the current pricing for fiscal year 2017, 2018 as follows. Viking Chemical of Rockville, Illinois, chlorine, $359 per ton, and phosphate at $0.42 per pound. Karas Chemical of Peru, Illinois, potassium, permagana TE at $3.38 per pound. SNF Polydine of Riceboro, Georgia, polymer, $0.52 per pound. Thacker Company of Montana of salt. Lake City, Utah, carbon at $1,480 per ton. Pinnacle of San Filippo, Texas, fluoride, $376 per ton. And USALCO of Baltimore, Maryland, alum, $346.42 per dry ton, and $168.76 per wet ton, coming out of Budget Code 555-915525464, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nussem, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item F, motion to authorize the proper city officials to award the water plant carbon mixer replacement to McDowell Mechanical Services of Waukegan, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $111,257. Funds for this contract are available in line item 555-916027018. McDowell Mechanical was the only bidder to submit on this project, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nussem, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, motion to authorize the proper city officials to exercise the extension clause in the 2016 water treatment plant sludge dewatering contract with P&amp;H Cenisac, Inc., Incorporated of Milton VT, for an amount not to exceed $158,000. Funds for the contract are available in line item 555-916027018. The contract has a one-year extension available if the parties agree to exercise it, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nussem, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item D, motion to authorize the proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise for bids for the custodial contract for City Hall, Police Department, and Public Works, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nussem, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
That's all I have, sir.
Next item is Public Works Committee. Alderman Nussem, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met this evening.
Excuse me.
Item A on the agenda, motion to authorize the proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise for bids for the custodial contract for City Hall, Police Department, and Public Works, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nussem, second by Alderman Moiseo. All's in favor? I'm sorry, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item B, motion to authorize the proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise for bids for various commodities for the Public Works Department, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nussem, second by Alderman Moiseo. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Item C, motion to authorize the proper city officials to participate with the State of Illinois Central Management Services for the procurement of our rolled salt for the next fiscal year, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nussem, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item D, motion to authorize the proper city officials to exercise the extension clause in the 2016 water treatment plant sludge dewatering contract with P&amp;H Cenisac, Inc., Incorporated of Milton VT, for an amount not to exceed $158,000. Funds for the contract are available in line item 555-915-724426. The contract has a one-year extension available if the parties agree to exercise it, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nussem, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item D, motion to authorize the proper city officials to exercise the extension clause in the 2016 water treatment plant sludge dewatering contract with P&amp;H Cenisac, Inc., Incorporated of Milton VT, for an amount not to exceed $158,000. Funds for the contract are available in line item 555-915-724426. The contract has a one-year extension available if the parties agree to exercise it, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nussem, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item E, motion to authorize the proper city officials to extend the water treatment chemical annual bid agreements with the current vendors, who have agreed to holding the current pricing for fiscal year 2017, 2018 as follows. Viking Chemical of Rockville, Illinois, chlorine, $359 per ton, and phosphate at $0.42 per pound. Karas Chemical of Peru, Illinois, potassium, permagana TE at $3.38 per pound. SNF Polydine of Riceboro, Georgia, polymer, $0.52 per pound. Thacker Company of Montana of salt. Lake City, Utah, carbon at $1,480 per ton. Pinnacle of San Filippo, Texas, fluoride, $376 per ton. And USALCO of Baltimore, Maryland, alum, $346.42 per dry ton, and $168.76 per wet ton, coming out of Budget Code 555-91552546, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nussem, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item F, motion to authorize the proper city officials to award the water plant carbon mixer replacement to McDowell Mechanical Services of Waukegan, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $111,257. Funds for this contract are available in line item 555-916027018. McDowell Mechanical was the only bidder to submit on this project, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nussem, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item F, motion to authorize the proper city officials to award the water plant carbon mixer replacement to McDowell Mechanical Services of Waukegan, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $111,257. Funds for this contract are available in line item 555-916027018. The contract has a one-year extension available if the parties agree to exercise it, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nussem, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item E, motion to authorize the proper city officials to extend the water treatment chemical annual bid agreements with the current vendors, who have agreed to holding the current pricing for fiscal year 2017, 2018 as follows. Viking Chemical of Rockville, Illinois, chlorine, $359 per ton, and phosphate at $0.42 per pound. Karas Chemical of Peru, Illinois, potassium, permagana TE at $3.38 per pound. SNF Polydine of Riceboro, Georgia, polymer, $0.52 per pound. Thacker Company of Montana of salt. Lake City, Utah, carbon at $1,480 per ton. Pinnacle of San Filippo, Texas, fluoride, $376 per ton. And USALCO of Baltimore, Maryland, alum, $346.42 per dry ton, and $168.76 per wet ton, coming out of Budget Code 555-91552546, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nussem, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item E, motion to authorize the proper city officials to extend the water treatment chemical annual bid agreements with the current vendors, who have agreed to holding the current pricing for fiscal year 2017, 2018 as follows. Viking Chemical of Rockville, Illinois, chlorine, $359 per ton, and phosphate at $0.42 per pound. Karas Chemical of Peru, Illinois, potassium, permagana TE at $3.38 per pound. SNF Polydine of Riceboro, Georgia, polymer, $0.52 per pound. Thacker Company of Montana of salt. Lake City, Utah, carbon at $1,480 per ton. Pinnacle of San Filippo, Texas, fluoride, $376 per ton. And USALCO of Baltimore, Maryland, alum, $346.42 per dry ton, and $168.76 per wet ton, coming out of Budget Code 555-91552546, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nussem, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, the other thing we discussed, sir, was recently enacted rules published by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources in December of '14 require Lake Michigan water supply communities to tighten up their systems as part of the state's responsibility to conserve water drawn from Lake Michigan. The current allowable non-revenue water volume is equal to 12% or less of the total water supply. This standard will decrease to 10% by 2019. To address the problem, the city is proposing to conduct a formal water audit, as developed by the American Water Works Association and approved by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. The term "water audit" is defined as an examination of pumping, metering, and financial accounts to check their accuracy. The water audit works to trace the flow of water from the source through the water distribution system and into customer properties. The water audit normally is summarized in the form of a spreadsheet that details the variety of consumption and losses that exist in the water system, and the purpose of the water audit is to accurately determine the amount of unaccounted-for water in a water distribution system, thereby allowing the city to develop a prioritized plan to eliminate all but the unavoidable losses. So this evening, the Finance Committee voted to approve a contract with Stanley Consultants, Inc., for the purpose of conducting an audit of the city's water system for an amount not to exceed $28,000, coming out of Budget Code 555-915-924-476, and Stanley Consultants was the low quote, and I so move, sir.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Item by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Taylor, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Item F.
Mayor?
Excuse me, go ahead, please.
Did we skip item D?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, item D. Motion to approve payroll payment of bills dated March 20th, 2017, in the amount of $1,503,389.67. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham, roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo? Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Nussem?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Item F, motion to exercise the power granted by Section 8.1-7 of the Illinois Municipal Code to authorize a mayor or city official as designated by the mayor to make only necessary and essential expenditures during the first quarter of 2017-2018 fiscal year on the basis of a percentage of the original annual appropriations made for by 2016-2017 fiscal year as presented. This temporary spending authority shall automatically expire July 31st, 2017, or until the adoption of the 2017-2018 fiscal year appropriation ordinance. Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Valco, any questions? If not, roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo? Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Nussem?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Item G, motion to authorize a proper city official to make an amendment to the Waukegan Park and Garage Lease Amendment dated June 7th, 2011, between the City of Waukegan and the County of Lake, as presented. Any questions on the motion? Yes, sir.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Alderman Valco.
As I read this, we're going from 100 spaces.
150. So we're 150. They paid for 100.
It says 100 spaces, and then we're giving them 50 free.
Yes.
How much is the county paying for, or not?
I believe it was, when I was a clerk, it was $58,000 a year.
No, how many spaces is the county paying for?
They're gonna be paying 50, and then 50 we're giving them free, because of the fact that they added a lot to their county.
They built a lot into that bill.
This is for the jurors.
Okay, so it's not 150, it's, they were paying for 100, and we're giving them 50 free. So it's not 150. It doesn't explain here why is that. So they built a lot?
Right, so now they're only using less than what they were supposed to, so we're giving them 50 free, and then they're paying for 50 spaces.
Okay, and they built a lot, and where's that revenue going for?
That's their own lot.
So once it's built, we're getting it back?
No, that lot's already built, so they're using those spaces for the jurors,
instead of ours, instead of the garage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So we've, I'm sorry, so we've always given them 50 spaces for free?
Yes. See, Alderman, between Monday, Monday and Wednesday, it was really busy over there, because that's when the jurors were selected. But Thursday and Friday, they were empty. So in order to compensate that differential, we give them 50 free, and charge them for the other one. Okay, a roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Nussem?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Item A, to approve the use of the Stern Pavilion for the Gospel Concert Saturday, July 8th, from noon to dusk. This event is sponsored by the Christian Faith Fellowship Church. In addition, the sponsor has applied under the directive for a non-city use of city-owned building and venues, and has paid all costs required by that directive. They are also requesting the city waive the gate fee for visitors. Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Ziegler, any questions? This is, we've done this, this is our second year or third year? Third year. It runs in conjunction with SCOOP, and last year, it was extremely successful. And no other questions, roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo? Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Nussem?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Item I, approve use of parking lot F by UMA Center on May 26th, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. In addition, the sponsor will, has applied under the directive of non-city use for city-owned buildings and venues, and has paid all costs required by that directive. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Tempest, any questions? If not, roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo? Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Nussem?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Ordinance is a resolution, a resolution, a resolution to implement a new policy for the City of Waukegan Police Animal Control Shelter to better serve the citizens and the lost and homeless animals of the City of Waukegan. What this is, is, under, under my administration, I instituted a no-kill, no-kill animal shelter. We have not killed or euthanized an animal, a healthy animal, in the last four years since I've been a mayor. I want to make sure this continues. I can tell you this, what really disturbed me the most, and I was extremely upset when I found out that we were drowning kittens and puppies in a sack. Not, 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 not the current, but that, when I found that out, that, I just, I had to stop it. So in order, in order for this to work, four years ago, we instituted a program, it's called WAGS, Waukegan Animals Getting Saved. And what WAGS does, is WAGS subsidizes the food and the veterinary care for our animals. So this program subsidizes our animal shelter, so our citizens do not pay for food or veterinary care. Susan, would you please give up here and give a, please, a brief summation?
So I broke down numbers, since 2011, we've had Waukegan animals getting saved. And we've really worked with licensed rescues, and since 2011, I'm adamant about. I'm a, I believe in rescue. So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna just start out, and then I'm gonna redo some numbers, and they're mind-boggling numbers that I don't think the council, even the mayor, even my own bosses, realize by working with rescue and a city saving animals, what the city is saving financially. And that's the way I'm gonna present this to you. I'm not going to stand here and tell you why I personally think giving animals a second chance is the right thing to do. I'm gonna tell you the benefits of saving animals in the City of Waukegan. Waukegan Police Animal Control is a shining example of the animal, of animal controls in the state of Illinois. I'm gonna just use, for the year 2016, since we just had that year. We took in a total animal, total amount of animals, of 760 animals. That was last year. When I started, I started at the end of 2004. So in 2005, we took a total of, and this is a low number, 3,000 animals. Probably five cats went back to its owners, and maybe dogs, maybe 100. The rest, the city paid on a yearly, well, we paid monthly to get these animals into a facility. Some made it, most didn't. We paid out on a year, $52,425. In 2016, I put 528 non-aggressive, healthy animals in rescue for free. 232 animals went back to their owners because of our microchip program, where the city makes money on that. We sell the microchips for 15, and the city pays 5. It's a way of, when we get a dog in, we know who owns that dog. If they don't want their dog, they're still getting a ticket. So it's a win-win. Since 2011, since we've had WAGS and really working hard with rescue, the city, these might sound minor things, but it's saved thousands of dollars. The city, since 2011, by working with rescue, we haven't bought a washer and dryer. We've gotten three sets, brand-new donated, probably a cost of $1,800 in seven years, city didn't pay for. In our vans, every year, because I started in 2004, Tina had to order, every year, we had to order new kennels for the vehicles. Each vehicle costs $450 for the kennels, there's like six kennels, for three vehicles that we have. We haven't had to buy a kennel since 2011. City has saved now on the kennels, $9,450, because we get that for free, because we work with rescue. The city has not paid for dog food or cat food since 2011. The city, on a yearly basis, paid $5,460 in dog and cat food. In seven years, by not paying, the city has saved $38,220 bowls. City always had to buy bowls, it's part of what we do. You haven't bought us a bowl since 2011, and we, that's a low thing, but in seven years, hey, it's $350. Animal emergency. When I started here, our bills, I talked to Maria, we couldn't get to the bills because they were from 2005. And she remembers these as well as I do. Our animal emergency bills were over $1,000 a month. So that's probably $12,000 a year. Our animal emergency bills are probably down to $3,500 a year now. Beach Park Animal Hospital, because we are so involved with rescue, we get rescue rate. We average $8,000 to $9,000 a year, back in 2005. We're about $3,500 a year. We don't even get a discount, we get rescue rate. WAGS, the Waukegan Animals Getting Saved, since 2011, for the dogs at Waukegan Animal Control, have paid out $83,500 for our dogs at Animal Control. Our cats, the Waukegan Animals Getting Saved, has paid $42,600 for our cats in seven years, that the city hasn't paid. I'll brief you with the spay and stay program, just in the last seven years, because I know the cat thing's sometimes an issue. The spay and stay has paid, the spay and neuter, these wild cats out in our city, they've done 1,531 cats since 2011. I just want you to understand, in a four-year period, one cat, male, one female cat, could produce up to 2,000 kittens, because the kittens produce, it's just, it's a cycle. So to spay and neuter 1,531 cats in our city, at not the city's expense, is huge. I have done pit bull clinics with the, we've had foundations pay, not the city, for our citizens. We spayed and neutered 335 pit bulls last year, at, at the agency's expense, not the city, and these were for our citizens. 120 other breeds, we did for free. So we also do, we order parvo shots, because we had a huge epidemic of parvo, which cost the city money when we were sick and dead dogs all over our city. We've cut that down 75% with doing the parvo shots, and the city makes $5 a shot on that, and we can legally do that, give the injection. So anyway, that's, should be a reason enough for the city to want to do no-kill, to save that kind of money.
May I comment, Mayor? Go ahead, Larry. Mayor, may I comment? I do go out to the dog pond quite a bit to see Susan. What a hard-working animal lady we have, animal shelter lady. I mean, she's in there cleaning the cages sometime, she cares. All, well, quite a bit of the time. You work hard, she really does, and she's always there, willing to help. And we're really lucky that we, we have a person of Susan's nature, and that cares about animals, and really cares about the city, and responsible, trying to find them a home. And I commend you for that, Susan. You're doing a great job out there, you really are. And I know, because I come and check once in a while.
Well, what I can say to you is, I know this. Susan, how many tons of dog food did I go pick up?
Oh, boy.
From Rockford?
A lot.
Right? Tons, truckloads of dog food. So you've done a great job out there, and I can tell you, being a rescue person myself, we rescued, my wife and I, over 100 dogs. We found homes for every one of them. So this is near and dear to me, and I just want this program to continue over, through the next administration, and well beyond that. So Susan, thank you so much for all you do, and I really appreciate it. A roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham?
I'm gonna say aye to that, your honor, but I do wanna say this. She doesn't remember this, but I was an animal warden for the City of Waukegan for about two or three years. And I can remember the old Chevy van with the sliding door. And we used to do a lot of different things. Euthanization was never to that degree, your honor. I don't know where that came from, and I'm glad you, you and the animal control people out there saw that, that cruelty to animal, animals have certainly stopped, particularly in our city. And several times, I have called you about animals who needed help, and one particular one who praises your name to today, Mr. Beckwith, and about his pit bull, and how you helped him out. So congratulations to you, and Mayor, kudos to you for making this a priority for the City of Waukegan. Thank you very much. My vote is aye.
Alderman Ziegler?
My vote is aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
I can't think you're not aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Kudos to Animal Control for all the great work you've done, partnerships.
Aye.
Alderman Nussem?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco? Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Audience, audience time?
Dulce Ortiz?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. First and foremost, I would like to thank Mayor Motley for his service to this community. And actually, you all received what Cynthia is distributing to you via email. All the documents should be in your inbox. And what I wanted to say, I had a speech written, but I think I'm just gonna go with what's in my heart. This issue is very near and dear to me, because when I was 10 years old, I crossed the border as an undocumented immigrant. And if it wasn't for the opportunities that this country gave me, I wouldn't be standing here. And I wouldn't be doing all the work that I can for the City of Waukegan, and for my community. So, with that being said, we are, tonight, we're not looking for a yes or no answer. We want you to look over the information, and we look forward to meeting with you in the next couple of weeks to answer any questions that you may have, and also to come into common ground, to find out how we can protect the least of these. So, we have come together as a coalition of service agencies and nonprofits to encourage the City of Waukegan, Mayor and City Council, to make a commitment for the City of Waukegan to pass the Welcoming and Safe Communities Ordinance, which states, "In order to assure that all residents of the City of Waukegan, regardless of their country of origin or citizenship or immigration status, shall have fair and equal access to municipal benefits, opportunities and services, and shall have the right to live in the City of Waukegan without discrimination based on country of origin or citizenship or immigration status." It is hereby ordered, Section 1, "The policy of the Office of the Mayor is declared to encourage equal access by all persons residing in the City of Waukegan, regardless of their country of origin or citizenship or immigration status, to the full benefits, opportunities and services, which are provided or administered by the City of Waukegan. To that extent, the provisions of this order/resolution shall be construed to provide such access to the extent consistent with applicable legislative and common law provisions." I will go ahead and skip to Section 3, where it states, "No agent or agency shall request information about or otherwise investigate or assist in the investigation of the citizenship or immigration status of any person unless such inquiry or investigation is required by statute, ordinance, federal regulation or court decision." Section 4, "No agent or agency shall detain any individual because of an actual or suspected citizenship or immigration status unless required to do so by statute, ordinance, federal regulation or court decision." So that's just the next excerpt of the ordinance. Please feel free to reach out to any of the members of this coalition that are here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dulce. Sister Kathleen?
Alderman, I might want to tell you this. That was drafted by the Latino group that I put together, and that is currently being utilized by our police department. This is a, this is an ordinance. We are doing this in practice currently. This would just be the ordinance form dictating that this will be our policy and procedure from the day it's passed forward.
Sister Kathleen Long?
Good evening, Mayor Motley, and members of the council. As you know, I'm a member of Most Plus Trinity Catholic Church here in the community, one of the largest immigrant communities, faith communities here in the city. And I'd like to quote our Catholic Cardinal Supich from the Archdiocese of Chicago. "At the end of February, because of the new presidency in the United States and his administration, Archbishop Supich sent a letter out to all the Catholic priests, saying, 'I ask your support as we stand together in solidarity with many of our parishioners who are deeply troubled by the recent executive orders related to immigration. We need to stand together and clearly make it known that the Archdiocese of Chicago supports the dignity of all persons without regard to immigration status.'" Recently, the Father Gary Graff Center had a workshop over here at Crystal Ray St. Martin on March 8th. And I want to say to you, Sheriff Curran walked in. It was a surprise, we didn't know he was coming. So we gave him a few minutes to speak, maybe you saw it in the New Sun on the front page. So Mayor Motley and City Council, I ask you to meet with Sheriff Curran. He said the same things that night that he's never said before, that Mayor Motley has said, that they won't ask the immigration status. Please help us work together with the county police and the city police. We want to secure safety for our immigrant community. Many, many more are coming to the Father Gary Graff Center for citizenship classes. It's tripled since there's a new President of the United States and all these travel bans, et cetera. Many people are coming because they're afraid they're gonna be deported. They're asking for guardianship papers for their kids in case they get raided at the workplace or standing for a bus stop. They want their children protected. So we need your support to keep our families safe. Thank you very much, and I look for your support in at every level of this new welcoming ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sister. Marielena Jonas?
Good evening, all. My name is Marielena Jonas, and I am the director and founder of the Hispanic American Community Education and Services. But I've been, I'm not new to Waukegan, I've been spending most, almost 30 years serving the community and getting their documentation, so they can become legalized. And right now, we assist close to 6,000 individuals a year with legalization, citizenship and immigrant integration services, which means education and helping them to feel, to learn about regulations and rules, so they can fully enjoy the living in their communities. As another factor is, Waukegan has a foreign-born population of 57%. 53% being Latino and 42, and 4% being Asian. And it doesn't mean that all of these people are undocumented, but as you know, we all have relatives. And so through our services and through my acquaintances with people, we want to reassure that Waukegan is a good place to live, is a good place to invest. And also for the relatives that come and visit, because you know, we have extended families, that it's safe for Waukegan to come in. When we were facing 287G, the proposal that came to the City of Waukegan, in, as I was serving the people, I noticed how people move out of Waukegan, moving Beach Park and other communities that were more friendly. And it really hurt the, I'm sure that you know, it hurt the economy of the city, because many businesses closed. And if you see now, all this is, in the last few years, I also noticed that the Waukegan has become a very friendly city again. So we want to keep it that way, so this way we all win, right? With a high percentage of Latino and foreign-born population, it just makes sense that our community really becomes the friendly community where people want to stay and want to thrive and live. So thank you very much, and I'm part of the coalition, so please, you know where to find us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jonas. Megan Mahia?
Good evening. My name is Megan McKenna Mahia, and I live in Waukegan. I'm a resident here in Waukegan, and I am coming to you tonight as a resident, but also as a community leader within this coalition as well. First of all, as a resident, I wasn't born here, I'm not a lifetime Waukeganite, but I'm a proud Waukeganite, and I really chose to stay here and be involved in my community because of the many great assets that this community offers. One of which is the vibrancy and diversity of our people that live in this community, which is actually our greatest strength. As a community member, I really love being a part of a community that values, promotes, respects diversity and multiculturalism. Many of you also know that I'm the Executive Director of Mono A Mono Family Resource Center, which is a nonprofit organization based in around Lake Park, but that serves immigrant families across Lake County. And we have additional offices, including an office here in Waukegan, office space. We serve over 4,500 families per year, and our mission is really to empower immigrant families to become full participants in American life. And we do that through helping people with health, education and legal services. And our vision is really a county that's united, that's integrated. In my role as the Executive Director of Mono A Mono, I personally engage in a lot of conversations with community members, mostly non-immigrants, actually, and elected officials, policymakers, about how they can better support immigrant friends, families and neighbors in our communities. And as you can imagine, our agencies, our coalitions have been very busy recently with recent turns of events at the federal level. Recently, through a series of executive orders under President Trump, there have been major changes to the priorities of who's considered deportable or removable from the United States. Under President Obama, who actually did deport more people than any other president in our history, the priorities were very specific. There were specific individuals who were threats to national security, threats to Border Patrol, to public safety, and people who had recently arrived illegally. But now, under President Trump's new removal priorities, anyone, any alien, so it's a non, any non-citizen, not just undocumented people, that any alien can be removed if they've committed any crime, if they've been charged with any crime, if they've done anything that's considered criminal. In addition to that, at the discretion of a national security officer, people can be removed, just at one individual officer's discretion. So you can imagine that this includes a lot of people. This, this casts a broad net, and what it's resulted in in our community in Lake County and in Waukegan in particular is a lot of fear and anxiety in our community. Another part of these recent executive orders is that, under this very aggressive deportation framework proposed, there's an emphasis on local law enforcement helping to remove people. And so what this has also contributed is an increased fear and anxiety around local law enforcement, police, whether it's local police, police departments at the city level, or even county sheriff and jails. As you can imagine, in our world right now, in the community world, working with community members directly, we've seen a dramatic increase in stress, anxiety and concern about how these new priorities could affect the families in our community. It's, sorry, okay. Thank you. So we urge you to look at the documents and support what you can.
Mister Blain?
For the Blanks, Black Abolition Movement, for the mind. As we're speaking about diversity, I just want to pick up where I left off last week. And I think people being able to celebrate their diversity and their heritage is a good thing. So, you know, I want to commend those who did the job, whoever committed to the St. Patrick's Day celebration downstairs. So that's a good thing. I think everybody should be able to celebrate their heritage and culture, and particularly if you're gonna do that here in the city, in the city hall, and whenever you're gonna do that, it should be a reflection of not just some, but all. to do that, it should be a reflection of not just some, but all. So that lead me back to what I was saying. I think St. Patrick's Day is celebrated technically one day, but we have what we consider as Black History Recognition, which is that month in February. And I can't recall at any point in time, and I really want to put this out there for the future mayors as well, I can't recall any time going downstairs in that area where you pay the water bills and the tickets out of the whole month of February where I've ever seen anything that reflected, that even reflect the celebration of Black History during the course of that month. And I think if we really, you know, want to be sincere and genuine in the area of diversity, I don't know who paid for it, it looks nice, but if you need some aid and assistance from myself in any way to make sure that it's fair and equitable, whenever you put decorations downstairs, like you have for St. Patrick's Day, that's been there for the whole month that comes the month of February, or any time, I don't just really put that, limit it at within the month of February. So if any time that we can do anything to aid and assist in the balance of making sure that when that area down there is utilized to celebrate history and culture, all of your citizens of Waukegan are represented in that particular area. And I'd like to be, as they say, constructive in my criticism in that. That's why I'm saying if anything that we can do to aid and assist in the making sure it's fair and equitable, particularly for everybody, holler at me. I'd be glad, most definitely, when it comes to Black History and culture, but everybody's culture should be celebrated in that area down there, not just some, but all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blain. Celeste Dumas? Margaret Carrasco?
Margaret Carrasco, first of all, thank you to the Legal Women Voters and the AAU organization, yes, for organizing yesterday's mayoral debate. It was packed, it was fabulous. So many questions, so many issues, right on. Also, to the Spanish media, Raul Ventura, who streamed it online, it's gone viral, over 6 million hits. Boy, that's fabulous. The next thing is just to let people know, I just got this at the last minute. Apparently, there's a little Latina student from Greenwood School that's missing. She's dressed in navy blue shirt, purple hood. You can just imagine as a parent, not knowing where your child is, it must be devastating. And the last thing is that I've been contacted, oh my gosh, this has been overwhelming, I would say approximately 50 current Waukegan city employees and past city employees with concerns. I'm bringing another one out today, and that's a handout that's being passed out right now. Specifically, this one is in regards to a black 2014 Ford Taurus, also known as the Mayor's own vehicle. The, my understanding, and please correct me if I'm incorrect in this, the vehicle belongs to the city. So what's going to happen? Where's that going to go? But have you noticed on your sheet here, the questions that I posed is that, well, first of all, on February 13th, we have a purchase order request from the mayor for a vehicle. Then on April 22nd, we have the purchase order, their order from Landmark Car Dealer in Springfield. Why? We have Waukegan businesses. Why was that car purchased on Springfield and not given to a Waukegan business? The next question that I have-
State bid. State bid.
Thank you. The next question that I have is that the check requests on the second page, if you notice, the department that the funds are being used for the check requests were being drawn from the police department, according to the FOIA documents that I received. Now, what was missing in the FOIA request, and I, and maybe I missed it, I may be wrong, I didn't see anywhere in the minutes where the city council alderman approved for the purchase of the vehicle. Now, my understanding is that every other mayor prior has driven his own car. I mean, because the mayors get free gas, we all know that, okay? So I don't understand, and I just really, you know, there's a lot of questions here as far as financing, finances. And also, my last question in regards to finance, also, all the legal bills, all the attorneys, Attorney Steve Martin, Attorney Lazini, Mancini, excuse me, Attorney O'Donnell, Attorney Finlay, are the taxpayers paying for all these related litigation for the mayor and for George Tours? Thank you.
Your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you. Alderman Cunningham?
I too want to thank the Women League Voters, AAU, Waukegan Township on an outstanding forum that they presented this Sunday. What an amazing crowd, awesome questions, and it was great just to see that many people come out and show interest. You know, when you hear people talking about no one cares about what's going on in Waukegan, I beg to differ. Yesterday's forum proved, not only to me, and I think to Alderman May, that there's a lot of people that care what's going on in our community. So I commend those organizations for an outstanding, outstanding forum yesterday. And continue to pray for the Evans family. There was a home-going service at First Corinthians Missionary Baptist Church for one of Waukegan's own, Bobby Evans. The mayor was in attendance, along with Steve Martin, Corporation Counsel, and Fifth Ward Alderman, Eve Newsome. It is, and I don't know if anyone was there, some of the ones I've seen, so I know his family, Rhonda, Robert Jr., Rochelle, and Tony, were so appreciative to see not only the city come out, but those who were in attendance for their dad. Thank you.
Alderman Deeger?
For all the hard work with the snow removal. I mean, before the snow hit us, we had those windstorms, and there was a lot of damage done. They did a great job, and there's still a lot of cleanup. And just taking time out to thank Public Works for all their hard work, also our fire department, our police department. Great job. And Susan, thank you very much. You've been a great help through the Second Ward and the city of Waukegan. You do a fantastic job. Thank you very much.
Alderman Moitio?
Just one, two things. First, I would love to have or hear a concert with Harrison, Lee England Jr., and Marvin Smitty Smith. I don't know if anybody can make that happen, but that's three of Waukegan's own right there, and three of the best anywhere around. So if anybody's got ideas on how to make that happen, maybe pass it on to Harrison. Maybe you can work on that, Harrison, see if you can get you three guys together. I think that'd be pretty neat. And Susan, did you forget who I work with? Lori Stevens, did you forget who I work with?
I didn't forget, I know who you work with.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I mean, I am so, so grateful for everything that she does and has a heart for animals because as my people at home say, they think I'm half-dog anyway, so, but that's all right. I'll take it. Thank you.
First, I'd like to say thank you, everyone, for being out here today. It's good to see this size audience, so thank you for coming. Couple of things, I just want to recognize our Waukegan High School Boys Basketball Team for a valiant effort they had at the sectional championship against Evanston. I hadn't been to a high school game that well-attended in some time, and it was great to see all the energy and the support and the community members that were there. It was an amazing time. I believe the tickets for Waukegan's site sold out within a few hours of going on sale. Also, I want to mention the, another basketball game that happened the day after that, the Waukegan Firefighters versus the Waukegan Police Officers game. That was a great game to attend. The firefighters won this past year, this year, for the first time, I think, in the past four, five tries. So firefighters got a victory this year, which is good for them. But it was just fun to see the families and community members be there to support, you know, the people that serve us. And it's, it was, and the halftime, they were doing some fundraising, and there was students who participated in the special, special recreational leagues for the basketball, so it was great to see them partner up with some of the high school students, to kind of do small teams exhibition match. So if you ever get a chance to see that, it happens annually, I recommend you go catch the game, it's a super fun time. Couple of things also, that's community-based stuff. I had a great opportunity to talk to students from two schools within the past two weeks. In continued efforts to partner more with Abbott Middle School, I've also met with their Young, their Ladies of Distinction Group, which are eighth graders who are being kind of mentored and modeled to be leaders within the community and leaders within their schools and their peer groups. So I had a great opportunity to sit there and introduce myself to them and take some questions from them, and give them some insight about how the school district works and how city hall works. And I'll be working more with them going forward. I want to work with them and the Young Men's of Distinction Group, sorry, Young Men of Vision Group at Abbott Middle School also. So that's a partnership I'm trying to form and forge better. I also had the opportunity to go to Oakdale Elementary for their Saturday morning kind of schooling also, and talk to, I didn't get the actual grades for the students, it was about a half dozen. It looked like they arranged possibly third grade to fifth grade. And again, inform about leadership and working together as a team and being reflective and giving a better sense of kind of how the community works. These are young individuals who, I've always been a firm believer that, given the opportunity to be exposed to ideas that you normally aren't, and broaden your horizons. So even if those students didn't catch everything I was telling them, there was possibly, hopefully, something stuck with them. Plus, it's an opportunity for me to meet someone who's related to the city. As a young boy for me growing up, I would always just hear the city, the city, the city. And the city was just some faceless entity to me that really didn't mean much. So my efforts in talking with students is to let them know that, hey, we are people that you can talk to, and this is outlets you can reach out to us. So to start young, to give them those mentalities going forward, those are potential people that can be leaders in our community going forward. So it was great to talk to those students. So, and last, I was able to attend the Art Walk this month, it was amazing. Lot of great energy there. If you don't go to Art Walks, the third Saturday of the month, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., I want to give a shout out and kudos to David Motley and Vicky Morosco for putting together a great exhibit at Urban Edge. There will be ability to see this, this exhibit. They were able to partner with a private collector to show an exhibit that has, like, artwork from the 1700s. There is a famous artist's displays there, so, and it has to relate to, it's called The Human Condition, and it relates to mortality. So it was a wonderful exhibit. As we get more information about what dates and times that you can come and visit, I recommend you take a look at that exhibit at Urban Edge. So there was a lot going on, not as much, but there'll be more going on forward. So again, thank you for being here, thank you so much.
Alderman Newsome?
Thank you. I'd just like to say congratulations to Harrison, Mr. Harrison Bankhead. Much deserved award. Thanks for giving back to our community. And also to thank Susan for answering my call and bringing me up to speed on the impact that Spay and Stay has made in the city of Waukegan. I did call you regarding a few calls, one in particular about a few stray cats that we still see roaming around, but you let me know that it's much less than it used to be, so I appreciate that. And I thank you for always answering the call and going out to check out whatever response to the calls.
That hurts, but yeah.
All right. Thanks for caring, appreciate it. That's all.
Alderman Tempest?
I should pass, but I do appreciate animal control. I should pass, but I do appreciate animal control and the job you guys do. I can remember in the back ages, when we were down on Low Avenue, what a change we've had in our animal control methods compared to back then. I mean, we have a person, a staff out there that really cares. And I, I know because I check out there every once in a while, something to do. Thanks for all you do.
Alderman May?
Thank you. So I'll quickly echo everyone else. I remember when 2011, we rewrote the animal ordinance when I was in the Judiciary Committee, and we did a lot of hard work with Anna and Amy on that. And Spay and Stay was a little difficult to get through to some of the community members, but you've proven that it has been a big success. So thank you so much. We're all animal lovers, so we appreciate what you do for the city and recognize. This weekend, I was, I was invited to a celebration between four community churches, and they gathered for a celebration at Shiloh Baptist Church. But it was the Journey Church, Christian Neighbors Church, City Reach, and New Abbey. So four smaller churches that spent a week serving the community in many different ways. They did some work at Carmen Buckner School, they're helping a new church get their building together. I know they've done cleanup efforts with Alderman Villalobos and the Fourth Ward. But the message was, their theme was servolution. And their whole message was, it wasn't just about the week, getting together for one week to combine all these different denominations and different races, and it was about starting something. They kept talking about this was a comma, not a period. This is a start to collaboration and diversity. So it was a really, it was a really powerful message. And Mr. Soler, I don't know if he's a pastor or a reverend, his line that really stuck with me was that we need to use our diversity for multiplication and not division in our community. So use diversity for multiplication, not division. That really has stuck with me, and I think it's a great message to our entire community. So I think that they're going to continue to reach out to different churches and continue their work in Waukegan, and so I just want to give them a shout out. It was a very uplifting celebration. And so that is a perfect lead in to the community members, both faith-based and the Latino-based community, service committees that are here this evening, talking to us about this ordinance. And so I appreciate your words and your work in this matter. I think that we get caught up in the discussion, and it becomes very political when we're talking about sanctuary city. And I think, I appreciate the approach that these, all of you have taken on this. You know, our immigration population here in Waukegan is crucial to our city on so many levels, but definitely on an economical level. So we will definitely continue the discussion, and we just want to thank you for your work and your efforts in this, in this area that's very, very troubling. I did have the opportunity to go to a Know Your Rights gathering, and it was, it was pretty heart-wrenching when you see families getting their legal documents together in case they're separated from their children, and, you know, making arrangements for children to be, you know, who's going to be caring for them in case their parents are deported. And watching these kids listen to this conversation and getting these people set up with the right legal resources, I encourage anyone, immigrant, whether you're Latino or white or black or Asian or whatever, if you have a right opportunity to go to one of these seminars, it might change your mind about some of the stereotypes that we end up with in our, in our minds. So it was, it was very eye-opening for me. So thank you for addressing that. And the arts community, six years was, on the revival of Art Walk, was it the six-year anniversary this weekend? Unfortunately, I didn't get to get out there, but congratulations to Waukegan Arts Council, David Motley, Jane Ferry, all the galleries. Thank you.
Alderman Velko?
Thank you, ma'am. Couple items. Susan, first, you, you and I go back a little bit, you've helped me out. Yes, ma'am. You helped me out quite a few times as an alderman and even as a police officer, you helped me out quite a bit, so thank you, congratulations on the wags. Harrison Bankhead, you and I go way back, sir. Yes, sir, we do. My congratulations to you, and hope everything works out for you in the future. And that would be nice, as Alderman Mosi will say, to get you and Smitty and a couple other Waukeganyites together and do something, that would really be nice. I hate to say this, Chief Bridges, but yeah, you're laughing already. Congratulations, it was one hell of a game. We were down by 15 with about four or five minutes left. You guys did a good job, you won by two, and it was really a great game. And they seem to all be, I don't know what it is, the last three or four seem to be going down to the wire. So congratulations to the fire department, everything worked out good. On a very sad note, we lost a city employee about a week and a half ago, a very good friend of mine, Al Booth, retired police officer, and a city code enforcement officer in my ward, Ward Eight. Passed away, didn't let anybody know, he was sick till about four months left. And then he called me and a couple other people, and, but he wouldn't say anything, just went, just went out about and did his job. My condolences to his wife, Deb, his daughter Lisa, who came in from Oklahoma, and Tammy from Virginia, who- Lisa, who came in from Oklahoma, and Tammy from Virginia, who I've known since they were born. Uh, just a great, great city employee. I know the mayor, Al Booth, and myself were on the department at the same time, and we were all young officers at the same time. Not the easiest guy in the world to get along with, but he was always fair. He was always fair. And that's what he lived by. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
I also want to send my condolences to the Booth family. Um, I actually got to know Mr. Booth. Um, he would come on Fridays, and we'd have lunch. Um, just a fun gentleman. Um, as you said, always fair. Um, you know, saw, saw the good, the bad, and just laid it all on the table. Um, I was out of town last week and was not able to make his funeral. So, again, I, I want to wish his family my condolences. Um, Ms. Elliott, you're like my soul sister. Um, we met in a freak way of, I actually called her up. I happen to have four dogs. And when I had the four dogs, I was initially told, if you would live on an acre of land, you can have multiple dogs. Then, I sat one day, and I was reading ordinances and found out, no, you're actually in the city of Wakegan. You can't have four dogs unless it's approved by the police chief. So, I called up the police chief on his first day on the job and said, I need a letter saying that I can have four dogs. He said to me, what? So, he said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you to Ms. Elliott. So, I called her up, and I said, you know, I'd like you to come and see that I have these four dogs, and they are taken care of. She said, oh, I know where you live. You're fine. I said, no, I want you to come out and do a home study and make sure that these dogs are taken care of. She's like a home study. I said, well, like, I know they're taken care of, but how does anybody else know? And she accommodated me. She knew I was a crazy animal lover, and we have been best buds since. Um, I also want to mention one other lady who has not been mentioned tonight, and that is Allison Graham. She runs WAGs, and without her, I, I don't know where this city would be. And so, I just want to send that out for her, too. She really was very instrumental in WAGs.
She was amazing. She started, she started WAGs with me, Monty, a couple other people, and Allison. I can't say enough about her. It just got to be too much, you know. But she's-
But she's another crazy animal lover. So, like I said, she, she just needs to be mentioned also.
Absolutely.
I also want to thank you lovely ladies for coming and talking about the concerns of the Latino community. I think it's very important that people come and address the concerns. The same thing for you, Brother Blanks. We, we don't always realize some of these things that happen, that are subtle things. No one is intentionally not putting things down there. But unless citizens come and tell us, we don't always realize it. So, I want to thank everybody for coming, because that's what your council is here for, and that's what our job is. So, thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Most of my, uh, Alderman Moises II, Alderman May als in favor.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.